Tuesday, January 16, 2024, meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. To order.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move we convene in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A and 2.2-3712. The purpose of this closed session is under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A subsections 1, 3, 7, and 8 specifically. Number one, discussion of the acquisition or disposition of public property of disclosure would have an adverse financial impact to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3. Number two, consultation with legal counsel or briefing by staff about specific matters of potential litigation requiring legal advice, Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 and 8. And number three, discussion of employees hired and supervised directly by the public body, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Your second.
Second.
If I have to move to second, we go into closed session. Any discussion?
Yes. Does that personnel thing, Mr. Mueller, will laws discuss county attorneys?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're in closed session.
members certify that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened, were discussed and considered by the Board. If any member believes that the Board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so in the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter.
So certified.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Woodward.
Yes.
All right, we are back into open session. According to our bylaws, our meeting will come back into open session at six o'clock. It's not quite six o'clock yet, so we'll take this opportunity to welcome those of you who are attending here in the public meeting room and those who are watching on our live stream. This is the Tuesday, January 16th, meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. Our first item of business will be the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Barnes will lead the invocation. If you would care to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Much Jesus bear a cross alone, and all the world go free. If there is a cross for everyone, then there is a cross for me. Most gracious heaven and father, we would like to thank you for your opportunity for us to serve the people of Louisa County. Father God, you ask that we use the wisdom that you've given us, Father God, to make decisions that make their lives better. Also, Father God, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you to thank you for the troops that allow us to enjoy this free country. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add to the consent agenda of resolutions supporting Trevallian Station Depot on the CSX line, and I would like to remove from the public hearings a resolution to approve tonight REZ 2023-06 GK Structures, Larry Gianassi, managing member and agent, because the applicant has asked to defer it.
Are there any other changes? Is there a second?
Second.
Please cast your vote.
I'm having logistical issues. Alex, could you put my phone in?
Mr. Corson, good to see you. How are you, sir? Are you here for the public hearing for your neighboring piece of parcel? We've just deferred that. You're welcome to stay. It's not going to happen tonight. The applicant asked to defer it. Have anybody else who's here for that? I know specifically you probably were, because I know where he lives, sir.
Yeah, so since we did remove that public hearing, if you're here, you obviously drove here to speak on that public hearing, and still want to address the Board and address your concerns or your thoughts on that during public comment period, which I'll call up in just a minute, you'll get the same three minutes, and you can express whatever thoughts you had on that particular rezoning, and then --
Do you have a record on what was said before?
I'm sorry, sir?
Do you have a record on what we all said before?
There is. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So if anybody else is here to speak during that, on that issue, you can speak during public comment period. Motion passes seven oh. Next up is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please cast your vote.
Too many papers on top of my computer, sir.
Motion passes seven oh. Next is the approval of the bills.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion passes seven oh. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion passes six oh. Next is our recognitions. We do have a recognition tonight, recognizing Mr. Greg Lefler for his years of service on the Industrial Development Authority. Greg, if you want to come down here to the -- in front of the dais, and Mr. Goodwin. Face that way.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the public, this is a resolution recognizing and honoring Mr. Greg Lefler for his years of service on the Louisa County Industrial Development Authority. Whereas Mr. Greg Lefler was elected to represent the citizens of the Greensprings District on the Louisa County Industrial Development Authority from January 2021 through December 2023. And whereas while serving as the district representative, Mr. Lefler helped achieve fiscal stability, plan for responsible growth, and facilitate crucial infrastructure development and placement in the county. And whereas through his expertise and capable service, Mr. Lefler took noteworthy efforts which were beneficial not only in the Greensprings District, but to the county as a whole, including directing long-term funding for infrastructure projects that will accelerate the site readiness of the Shannon Hill Regional Business Park, donating suitable land to Louisa County Resource Council and the Louisa Housing Foundation to help in their efforts to expand services and meet affordable housing needs in the community, and developing and expanding the cost-effective public utilities that provide necessary elements for positive economic development while preserving and protecting the rural character of the county. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Lefler exemplified kindness and courtesy towards fellow authority members, citizens, and others striving to lead by example, offering unique insight, working to build consensus even in the most challenging situations to best serve Louisa County citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Louisa County Board of Supervisors hereby unanimously recognizes Greg Lefler for his dedicated service, representation, and leadership on the Louisa County Industrial Development Authority with respect and gratitude. James?
Greg, if you'd like to say a few words to the Board, you can certainly go to the podium.
I can turn this way.
Yeah, you used to make those, so the video picks it up.
I'm not sure that all those words were true that he spoke there, but thank you very much for recognizing me, and thank Ms. Jones for asking me to serve. It was great to work with you, Mr. Adams, and my fellow board members. It was a great experience, and I think I got a lot more out of it than I put into it, and again, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I would say, I think, Mr. Goodwin, everything he said was true. Mr. Board today is on to the IDA for the last four and a half years. The IDA does great work. You did a great job and represented the Greensprings District very well, so thank you for your service. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will move on to the public comment period. I do have a few cards to speak. When I call your name, come to the podium, state your name and your voting district. Excuse me, you have three minutes. You can talk about anything that is not a public hearing. We do have one public hearing tonight, so if you're here to speak on that public hearing, wait till the public hearing. I will give you a 15-second warning when you have 15 seconds left. The first card that I have is Nathan Young.
Electronic card, sir.
That was an electronic card. Is Mr. Young here? All right. We're going to be moving right through the public comment if they don't show up. Next is Melissa Young.
Hi.
Hi.
Melissa Young, Louisa District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am actually here to talk about the potential skate park in Louisa. We've lived in Louisa for 15 years, and I have two kids. One is a soccer player, and one is a skateboarder. We drive all the time, all over the place, to other places to visit skate parks. They -- we meet They we meet people all the time in Richmond and in Charlottesville who are from Louisa or who know people in Louisa who skateboard. So I know it's not just my son who would benefit from this. A skate park is to a skateboarder what the field is to a football player, or a court is to a basketball player, or a baseball game is to a baseball player. We do great team sports in Louisa. It's a great place for kids to develop those skills, build those friendships, have those coaches. The individual sports are a little trickier, but just as important to many kids. So a skate park is a place where young and old can come together, experienced and beginner skaters can learn from each other. Kids can learn from adults how to build those social skills and develop civic responsibility. I have never met kinder people than I have met at skate parks in senior years. I grew up in a generation where I was a little afraid of the skateboarders. They did not have such a great reputation. It is not the case. They are so kind, so respectful, so helpful to one another out at the skate parks, and having that in our community only helps build a sense of community and gives a place for people who do that sport to go. My son who plays soccer leaves to go play soccer, but if he wants to practice, there are fields, he can go pickleball around. If my son who skateboards brings his skateboard and wants to ride down the sidewalks and jump off curves, that's kind of frowned upon. We understand that, but saying no without giving an alternative of a place to practice his sport sends the message that you're not welcome. So I'd like to suggest that with the Olympics now recognizing skateboarding, with it being on TV as an Olympic sport this coming summer, and with it growing in popularity throughout the country, we should be ahead of that, too, and offer a place as that popularity grows for people in our community to practice their sport and develop healthy skills. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Next is Jim Boucher.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can you remind the citizens to speak into the mic? I just got a text from a person trying to watch it live, and they said they couldn't hear.
Yeah, so I don't know if you all heard that, but use the mic, because it picks up on the video and it picks up on the live stream.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jim Boucher, and I reside in the Mineral District. I'm here tonight to express my personal support for the pending Parks and Rec requests for a new multipurpose fitness center. I have been playing pickleball several times a week at the Betty Queen Center now for over six years. I want to share my experience with you to help you understand why I think this new facility would be an asset for Louisa County residents and to the many families at vacation at Lake Anna. So please consider the following three points. First, this game is not just a fad. As you've heard from some of my fellow players in the last few leagues, this is the fastest growing sport in the country, not just for people of my age group, but also for young people. When I started playing with my wife six years ago, there were about 40 people. Now it has grown to 440. I have also enjoyed playing occasionally with a limited number of young people on their spring breaks and in the summer when school is out. And the staff of the Betty Queen Center do a great job working with our pickleball ambassador, Annette Hayes, to set up a schedule for all levels of play. A new center with eight courts would really help manage the growth and shorten the wait time to play for all age groups. Second point, this game is fun, and it's like an addiction for like-minded people who want to get some exercise to maintain their health and enjoy social interaction, playing on a rotation with three others every game. There is a strong presence of community bond in Louisa with pickleball players. As you may know, the Gallaghers and many active players were very proactive in the fundraising activities with the New Bridge EMS Fire Station, and in just a few years, I have personally met over 100 people through this game, and they are all fun to be around. We often meet in small groups and outdoor play, at social activities in individual homes, and in local restaurants. Third, young people love to play this game. I set up a small practice court in my basement several years ago when I introduced the game to some relatives from Texas. They not only took to the game immediately, they carried it back to Texas, and they established two indoor courts and a large campus training center where they host close to 1,000 people a year. And they tell me recently they need much more than two courts, because the game is extremely popular with young people and families. I'm personally blessed with a large family, and I have taught several of my grandchildren to play. Some have played at Betty Queen. Every summer, we go to Massanut Resort, and during family reunions, I get to play with at least 10 members of my family. Some are adults, but many are children, and they recently upgraded their courts because of up increased demand. Both adults and young kids seem to love it, and they take easily
15 seconds.
I also learned recently that several cruise lines are now offering pickleball on board their ships. One of my grandsons played every day on a seven-day cruise. In summary, the game is popular, the sport is growing, the Betty Queen location is essential for most residents, and a new multi-function rec center with eight more courts would open more opportunities for youth than after-school hours and for residents who work during the day. In my view, like communities around us, this popular sport is promoted easily, but in local events and occasional tournaments for families.
Thank you, sir.
Please support the new facility to manage growth and provide recreational opportunities for visitors and for families of all age groups in Louisa County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Becky Wykoff.
Mr. Chairman, while Ms. Wykoff is walking up, I just my phone has been blowing up the last few minutes, and we might have some kids in here. School has been closed tomorrow.
Yes. I just got the message as well. My five-year-old is sitting out there.
I saw him out there, because of the road conditions.
Kindergarten.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I'm here to support the new pickleball facility as well.
Name, voting district.
My name is Becky Wykoff, and I voted Elk Creek Baptist.
Okay, thanks.
So I picked up pickleball about a year ago, and it has been just amazing. I'm one of the few younger people that play pickleball, and I hope that a new facility would really change that. It's been really impactful in my life, honestly. It's a lot of people that I wouldn't normally meet in the community, and that's like, normally you meet people that are your own age, and meeting other moms, and I went out and I was like, I'm going to learn this, it looks fun. And I went out and it was fun, and since then, I have met all of these people in the back of the room that are just these inspirational people in our community that are constantly fundraising and doing these things because they're retired and they have time, and it's something that I aspire to be. I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I do have time during the day, but so many of my friends are like, I don't have time to come until after work. Like, tell me when you have time to play outside at these courts that are in gated communities. Tell me when you have time that's not in the middle of the day. So it would be fantastic to have eight courts that are open that I can bring my friends to at night and say, hey, here's this game that we play, and here are these people that kick my butt on the regular that are way older than me. That doesn't happen in sports. Like, it's such an equal playing field, and they've taught me so much, and when somebody teaches you something on a court, you you respect them and you are willing to learn from them off the court, too. And I just think that's what pickleball brings to our community, is a melding of a younger generation and an older generation. That's priceless, especially around here. We're we have a great sense of community, but that's it. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Wykoff. Next is Judy Brown.
Good evening. My name is Judy Brown. I live in the Louisa District, precinct number two. We voted Trevillians Elementary, and I wanted you to know our story. My husband and I, Joe, we lived in Florida for 25 years, so we worked in Florida for 25 years. We bought a house in Blue Ridge Shores in 1997, and we thought we'd be one of those people that, you know, traveled to Virginia in the summer and went to Florida in the winter. But lo and behold, in 2011, we retired to Virginia. Florida is in our rearview mirror. We have lots of friends we can visit. All the years we lived in Florida, we heard of pickleball, we never played, until we saw in the Central Virginian a little ad one day that said there was pickleball at the Betty Queen Center. So in 2014, we went to Betty Queen, and we started playing pickleball. That's nine and a half years ago. We were some of the early birds in pickleball locally. We're active, we're athletic, we played golf, we made very few friends, really, although we were friendly in golf. We rode bikes. Pickleball was transformative in our lives. I don't know what we would have done without it. We have friends and friends and friends. Everyone we met at Betty Queen was interested in being active with their spouse, and I can't tell you, we went to dinners, we've traveled, we played in tournaments with people. I even began painting, because someone I met in pickleball is a painter. I've since gotten involved with the Purcell Gallery at the Arts Center. I've since started taking yoga, because some pickleball people said yoga was so good for them. I can't tell you the wonderfully positive snowball effect pickleball has had on our What I'd love to see in the future is more people from our county have the opportunity to play pickleball. It's it's good on a lot of levels. It's good for you physically, but it's good for you socially, it's good for you emotionally. It allows you to connect with all kinds of people, as I've heard someone say earlier. It's a silly name, pickleball, but it's really not a silly game, and the benefits are really quite incredible. So any any support I can give toward adding courts, adding time, I would love to see more of our young people able to play, would love to see more of our working people able to play. You know, we have the benefit of being retired, and it's a luxury, and we play quite regularly. Blue Ridge Shores has courts now that we've, you know, paved outside.
15 seconds.
It's growing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Good evening. My name is Jim Ut. I'm a resident at 311 Lakeway Road, Mineral Municipal District. I wish to speak to the support of additional of additional pickleball courts. To be a little personal about this, five years ago, I was diagnosed with mild cognitive impairment. It's the road toward Alzheimer's, but I'm in a UVA study, international study sponsored by Pfizer International Pharmaceuticals, which has been a blessing and great opportunity for me to have, especially having moved here after many years in Winchester, Virginia. One of the most important things I can do in helping to stem the impact of mild cognitive impairment and the progression toward Alzheimer's is to stay active in my senior years and pickleball better than anything else that I could do, which is a lot of things I could do that my wife asked me to. It's the most fun and best form of exercise, along with a healthy diet and also staying in contact with people, socialization. So I'm here to encourage you to consider providing really a means of therapy to people who have MCI or other cognitive issues. Aerobic exercise is one of the best things we can do to expand that. You can go to Betty Queen. I play outdoors a lot, but I can tell the difference, and I appreciate so much this body to have before it serious consideration for expanding expanding pickleball and serving the citizens of this good community is good county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would be curious, Mr. Ut, if you have to pay for that comment about your wife on your way home tonight.
I'm sure I'll find out later on.
I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will. Thank you, sir. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the Board during public comment? Yes, sir.
I said I'd go online, but I don't know if it went through or not.
That's okay.
I am Brian Hennett from the Greensprings District, here to show my support for the skate park as well. I've been a skater my entire life, since I was four years old. I'm now a 40-year-old skate dad, passing the torch on to my one-year-old and my three-year-old. My one-year-old cannot really walk on his own yet, but he can stand on a skateboard better than he can stand on his on the flat ground. My three-year-old has completely amazed me with her just ability and drive to be just like daddy. Like, she practices every single day. Since we picked it up, she has been at least an hour or so. Her name's Liberty. She calls it the Libby Show. She puts on her pads, her helmet, and skates through the house, skates through the garage. I built a little mini ramp out there for her, because there's nowhere for us to go. We drive anywhere we can within a two-hour radius, so I can't count the number. I don't want to bore you with all the details of all the places we've been, but I'd like to second what I can't remember her name. I believe it was Ms. Young. What she said earlier, though, what it teaches you throughout your life. It has fully changed my life. Grit, determination, perseverance, falling thousands of times just to land it once. Landing it once feels better than anything. Professionally, I've been in construction my whole life, so anything I can do to help, I would love to help. I was a salesman for many years. First of all, I want to say thank you for starting off with prayer, how refreshing that is. That's what's given me the confidence to be up here and not really look at my notes. I don't need it. I have man upstairs helping me. Anyway, it's just determination, grit, perseverance. We need a place to go. I'm too old to run from the cops. I'm not going to do it anymore. I'll be like, come on, take me in. I'm teaching my three-year-old. Like, what are we doing wrong? We meet people all over the place that are just amazing, from doctors, lawyers, preachers, anything I can think of, just good people. Yes, we have the same stigma, just kind of like Harley owners, like, we're not all, you know, bad people. A lot of us are good. We just need a place that we can go safely to let our youth, like, build their minds, build their bodies, like, do everything that we can do to bring another place back. I know there was one before I moved here. I moved here five years ago, or seven years ago, excuse me, and we I guess it was gone right before then, so we've been traveling for at least five years. I didn't skate for a couple of years, because we
15 seconds.
Anyway, just want to show my support, and anything that I am able to do, I'm happy to do it. Been out beating the streets, passing out flyers, getting people on the petition, and finding other people like-minded to try to help. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak to the Board during public comment period? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. I will add, I don't know how many of you are going to stay to the end of the meeting, but during committee reports this evening, I will be appointing a board work group to continue a discussion to guide the Board of Supervisors on short-term and long-term plans for Parks and Recreation. So we do want people to know, when you come and talk to us, when you email us, we do hear you. We are aware of what's going on, and this board is responsive. So we do appreciate you coming out tonight. It's going to get down to 12 degrees tonight, so when you go home, be careful on the icy roads. Next up, under information and discussion items, is a discussion fiscal year 2025 Operation and Maintenance and Capital Improvement Budget, and that is Ms. Colvin, the Finance Director.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board. Thank you so much. We're going to have our first preliminary discussion on the FY '25 budget. Very, very, very preliminary. We are just in the starts of it. So this is a work in process, so we have got we have gathered all the departmental requests. We do not have any input yet from the Board or from the county administrator. We have shown this to the Finance Committee, but we haven't delved into it yet. So we will meet with department heads next week and start going through the nitty-gritty of it and drill down a little more. You have a lot of documents in front of you. I've given you a copy of the outside agency detail request, some summary pages where I summarize the increases and what they needed the increases over last year. the increases and what they needed the increases over last year. You'll see a summary of operating and some detail there. You will see the capital plan. I gave you a printed copy. And so, that is also on the web, if you want, if anybody wants to see the capital plan and the outside agency details will be out there tomorrow. Revenues are incomplete. Of course, the General Assembly just convened, so we don't have the details yet on state and federal revenues to add, or any final numbers from the schools. We just have some placeholders placed in place right now. So, all data, again, is very preliminary.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes, sir.
Do you expect the General Assembly to do their job this year and give us a budget in a reasonable time period?
Of course I do.
Okay. Just a curious question. Thank you.
Let's hope so, at least. So, when we build our 24 budget, we always try to project out a year and look at 25 as well, like every other year. Costs keep going up faster than we're anticipating, so things are a little more expensive than we had projected last year. The revenues and expenditures, both have increased over what we projected last year for our preliminary numbers. The CIP projections last year, based on what people had submitted, have gone up another 2.4 million. But that's because costs have either gone up or additional projects have been added to the plan. We are, we do have an operational surplus to offset some of those capital costs of about $9 million, which you'll see on the next slide. Our real estate tax rate is one of the third lowest. Only Orange and Goochlin are lower, but Orange adds a fire and EMS fee. So, when you add that in, we're really only second lowest in our surrounding areas. And we still have the lowest personal property tax rate over the surrounding areas. So, here's the first look. Our total revenues, not including any kind of debt issuance, just our revenues, 167 million are estimates, with the total operating expense of 157 million, with a surplus of 9.3 million to be used towards 73.7 million of capital projects. The largest capital projects is the middle school expansion and the CTE center for the upcoming year, plus the Lake Anna wastewater treatment plant is also in there. Our fund balances, we ended fiscal year '23 with 75 million, but then we have to take out all of our assignments and our, our leave liabilities and all of our reserves for like the NAPS fund and the operating cash. So, when you take out all that, plus what's already been committed, that brings our fund balance down to 13.7 million that's available for these items. We also, the board over the past years has been putting aside long-term capital funds as we have them. So, we have, for the county, set aside 10.7 million. And for schools, we have 5.8 million. I do know the schools will want to use some of their 5.8 million to continue some positions in '25 that they will come back and ask for. I'm so sorry, my throat's scratchy. Stop me at any time if you have any questions. So, some of the revenue highlights. Fiscal year '25, we are anticipating an increase in real estate taxes. What that is, is a 6% fair market value estimate of increasing on real estate, plus it removes the rebate that we had last year. It gives us 11%. Transit occupancy tax, January of this year, we increased from 2% to 7%. So, we're anticipating that to bring in additional 1.1 million. Sales tax, we continue to grow, so our businesses are continuing to grow. So, I've increased those revenue projections by a million as well. The use of money and property, which is our rents and our interest on deposits, those rates have grown as the interest rate market has grown.
Ms. Colvin.
Back up, back up to the real estate taxes.
Yes, sir.
We had what seemed, certainly seemed to be ridiculous assessments last year, which sort of prompted the rebate, or whatever you call it, that we did. And you're telling me that they're anticipated to go up another 6%?
No. So, last year, we decreased revenues because we gave them back out to the citizens. So, y'all could vote to do the rebate again, but there is no rebate built in.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the assessment.
I'm looking at them potentially, based on conversations with our assessor, that they could potentially go up another 6%.
Another 6%?
That includes new stuff that's coming into county, too. Do you, it's not, it's not 6% of just plain growth in, like, your house worth 100, and your house not worth 106. Maybe your house worth 100, and that's worth 103, and, and you got $3,000 that came in because you got a new house somewhere.
So, individual assessments are not anticipated to go up another 6%?
I don't have those numbers yet. Just the revenues. I'm anticipating the revenues.
Assessments and the, and the additional new stuff is anticipated to be 6%.
New growth, I can understand, but the assessments.
And the assessments. The two together, she's anticipating 6%.
They need to look at the assessments again, because last year was ridiculous.
They're still working on them. I just have a preliminary number of 6%, so I used it. But, once we get the final numbers, which will be about mid-February, then we can adjust them down if that's the case. Or y'all can, at that point, decide that you may want to do a rebate or something with tax rate or something like that.
Ms. Colvin, who handles the assessments in the county?
The assessor's office, which works for the Commissioner of Revenue. So, I'm just going off of the information I was given. But as we get better information, I will update this, I promise.
Well, since we're on this slide, I was going to make a comment. I would point out that the transit occupancy tax, that approximately of that 1.19 million, excuse me, about 580,000 is encumbered by state code that has to be dealt on tourism.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, and I have that set aside as a restricted fund in the, in the adding of, under our tourism budgets. You'll see that if you look at the summary sheet, you'll see a negative amount offset for that amount of tourism.
Yes, ma'am.
Personal property taxes, I am building in for an increase on that of 4%, which is about half a million dollars is the estimate. Again, not final numbers, just what I'm estimating based on what we collected for final numbers in '23, what I'm seeing in '24. School revenues, this is just an estimate. We have no idea. So, this is a placeholder. We're just taking some guesses. We added an additional 2.1 in revenues that we're hoping from the state. Building and zoning permits, we're looking at those to increase about 150,000. The one change, grant revenues last year in our budget. We did include an 11.6 million dollar grant for a capital project for the business park that will come out this year. So, even though you see all these high numbers and you see it netted down, the total revenues is a 1% increase of 1.6 million, but it truly is increased about 12, because 12 million, because of the grant coming out. A one, a one cent change to the real estate tax rate is equal to about 1.1 million, $11,000. So, about a 1 million, a little over 1 million dollars.
That has grown. I remember.
It has. It was 960 last year and 820 the year before.
Year before, yeah.
Yes, sir.
That has grown.
One cent equals how much?
It's a million, 11,000, to just over a million dollars.
Because the tax base has grown bigger.
Yes, yes. Expenditure highlights. So, the operational expenditures have increased 7.35%, or 10.8 million dollars. This has a 32.5 million increase in capital from '24 to '25. We have included a 10% increase in health insurance. This is not a final number. We won't get that number till March, but this is a holding place. And this is just for the employer portion at this point. But as we get better age, y'all can look to see if you want me to add in for the employee like we have in the past. I've included a 2% increase for county staff and a 4% for school staff, because we did county in December.
As you gave the county 2% in December.
We did. And so, this is given the schools theirs in July. So, this increase includes that as a placeholder. It can go down if you would like, but I just included something in there. The governor's budget, I believe, has a 1% bonus, but that's just where he's at with that. I look for that to change with General Assembly.
That's ridiculous.
So, there are requests for additional positions included in here for fire and EMS. CSA continues to increase. DHS services continues to increase. It's an increase of 228,000, but we will get state revenues to offset a portion of that, based on which program it is. Outside agencies have increased 277,000. This does include some reductions for the jail and the detention center, so it's more like 300,000, a little more than that. And then I've increased expenses for the schools by 5 million. But if you net out the revenues we're anticipating, it's going to be about 2.9 as a placeholder. Again, we'll have better numbers that we'll get in as we talk through our next couple months of budget growth.
And before you move on, Ms. Colvin.
Yes, sir.
On the outside agency, and of course, we all know this is more for the public, the board will hold a workshop that will go through outside agency requests, basically line by line, and make a determination on outside agency requests. So, that number is very fluid at this point, which you've noted.
Yes. Our next meeting, February 5th, I believe, is our next board meeting. We will have a 3:00 PM work session where we can talk about capital and outside agencies to start that conversation at that time. And y'all can give me guidance on where y'all like me to go with that, and whatever the information y'all like me to gather.
Excuse me, Ms. Colvin. This is not for you. This is for the Finance Committee and Mr. Goodman. I would like to see, we've done a great job with compression for Sheriff Department, fire and rescue, but we got some other positions that I'd like to see us reevaluate with market that are hard to keep, they're lower positions, that we got a lot of movement, to see if we're competitive market, from a market standpoint. So, I would like to see us look, to do a market study on those lower positions. Let me give you an example, personal, like, one in Social Services that, that benefit specialists, some of those positions, we may be struggling from market. There's a lot of vacancies in those positions, to see where we are from a competitive standpoint on those lower-level positions.
I think we, I think we made some adjustments in, in Social Services as well last year, sir, on some compression stuff.
Yeah, right. I just want to make sure, from a compression standpoint, because I've been here, we waited years, and then we had to do a big donation at one, maybe a big correction at one time. So, I like, make sure we all stand on course with those lower positions.
We can look at those. We did increase, you guys increased last year. We moved everybody to $15 an hour, so nobody's less than $15 an hour, even part-time. We did look at DHS. It's been like two or three years ago, so it's probably time to look at it again. We can look at that.
Thank you.
The impacts of staffing. So, the only staff increase request for positions this year within fire and EMS, and of course, that is a growing department of ours. So, they have a request for six medic firefighters, for 10 part-time medic firefighters to fill some of those holes during the busiest season, you know, the busiest hours where they might have it, or if they can't fill the part-time, the full-time, then they'd have the part-time to help. They have a request for a part-time position to help with training needs. They have someone who works in the schools and is part grant-funded, but they were hoping to have somebody that also helped within the county. And then they've got a part-time logistics person. So, their ask is an additional 1, 1 million, 1, 1 million, 1,550 dollars for staffing. So, that, we have not met with them to go through it detailed, but this was the ask in the raw data.
Well, excuse me, are any of these positions, and I know we got to pick it up and end, but will we apply for a SAFER grant for any of these positions?
They did apply for one last year. We didn't get it.
Okay.
They can apply. We, we currently have one that will end. We have 10 positions right now being paid for with the SAFER grant that will end in '26, that we will be adding an additional million to our budget.
Got you.
Because that will end, and we'll have to pay for it.
Are SAFER grants still open right now? I know the turmoil in Department of Emergency Services, but was that only for, was that only for apparatus?
There's an application process. SAFER grants are federal funding for staffing, and it's an application process that opens annually.
Okay. So, the, the issue with the SAFER grant for apparatus, which the state has shut down right now.
Which is not a SAFER grant.
Okay, that's a different type of grant. Okay. And while we're on the subject, Mr. Barnes brought it up, and I'm actually going to look at you, because I'm sure you'll remember this better than I. One of the reasons for the part-time medic and firefighters is we have gone an extraordinarily long time with mandatory overtime. And this is to, I don't, maybe the word stopgap is maybe not the right word, but maybe it is, is to alleviate the pressure on our career staff, so that we're filling and marking up those duty hours. So, it's a, it's a more cost-effective manner.
Which will hopefully reduce overtime costs as well.
Exactly. So, I just wanted, we'll, we'll get into that more.
Absolutely.
But I just wanted to, I just wanted to.
Sorry, this was high level. I didn't give some perfect information. Thank you. Sorry, I should have gone deeper.
We would let you talk. We'd get out here at 7:00.
Okay. So, our, I looked at '25, so our projections for '25, we went over, but I also tried to do some projections for '26, based on the capital ask that we had this year for next year. And so, we're looking at a operating shortfall next year if we continue with, if we fund what we're funding this year, plus the anticipated 2% growth of expenditures, even anticipating a 3% revenue growth. We still will be having a request for 28 million in capital and not the operating money at this rate to meet it. So, these are just things we need to think about as we go forth and do things. And, and so, but again, things keep growing, so that could get better next year. Future considerations. So, the county continues to grow. Costs keep going up. Services, we need to provide more services, and we need more staff for those services, and the costs that go along with those in our contracts keep going up. We do anticipate debt issuance for the school project expansion, for the CTE center, and for the Lake Anna wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And so, that's about 61,000 per year for 30, 30 years for every 1 million that we issue debt on. And I'm looking at about 5, 59 million in debt. So, just an idea that that, that is built in those projections for next year as well, and this year. Federal and state funding are unknown. Potential for unfunded state mandates and federal mandates are still on the horizon. I know y'all have been following General Assembly. There's lots of changes they're talking about that could potentially happen. Continued increase in healthcare costs, continued Medicare expansion, CSA services, mental health and incarceration keep going up. This is just informational. I normally give it to you every year. So, if you want to, like, look at anything with salaries, it's approximately 680,000 for every 1% increase for schools and 213, 375 for county. And any questions? I know I went through that rather fast, but this is just the first of y'all seeing it. You have tons of information to read, and you can call me with any questions, or if you have any tonight.
Anyone have any additional questions for Ms. Colvin? Thank you, Ms. Colvin. I do want to add before, no, you're fine. I do want to add before we move on. I brought this up at last Finance Committee meeting, and I said I would bring it up here publicly, that I was approached by several veterans organizations here in the county, and am going to ask Finance Committee, excuse me, and ultimately the board, to look at the possibility currently, if you're 100% disabled veteran, you get 100% reduction on your real estate tax, that we look at a floor of 70%, 70, 80, 90%, that if they would provide documentation from the, from the VA, that they would get a corresponding tax relief on the real estate tax. So, again, something I told them I would talk about. I think it's something for us to look at, and I wanted to bring that up publicly. So, Ms. Colvin, thank you. Next up is a presentation on the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and Mr. Pat Hamley has been patiently waiting in the back. Pat?
I heard you say you wanted to get out by 7:00.
You heard correctly, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. We'll be brief. Basically, we're going to just kind of follow the pre-meeting material we sent you. And, Mr. Adams, I greatly appreciate the invitation to come and present the Dolly Parton Imagination Library to the board. Maggie Morris is here with me. She is the chairperson of the Dolly Parton Louisa Committee. Maggie, this is a group of citizens that have gotten together with the help of the Central Virginian notice to the public. Citizens contacted us and wanted to work in our committee. This group of people raised the initial funds that we needed to affiliate with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library group and began the signup process. I'm here representing the Louisa County Rotary Foundation. We're a member of Maggie's committee. And we, and a part of the process is you have to have a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) group to affiliate with Dolly Parton. Maggie's going to explain the program, talk to you about how we got together. Again, we're basically following what we put in the pre-meeting material. And I will come back afterwards and explain the success we've had. We've had great success, but the challenges we have to sign up children in the community. And then we will answer any questions you have. And then we will answer any questions you have about the presentation, about where we're going, what's in the material and the support we need and the help we need from you. Maggie?
So first of all, I want to say how proud we are of how far we've come because it's taken, well, it took a full year to get this up and running for the Louisa County children. It started January of last year. We all remember Ava Pippin, she asked me to join LEF. And a bunch of the folks that are on the board talked about it. Linda Harrell, excuse me, is the state advocate. I mean, she's really pushed for all counties to have this program in place for the kids. I needed a 501(c)(3) to help me because otherwise they won't let us sign up for this, Dolly won't. So Betty Dickinson said, Maggie, you need to meet Pat Hanley, he's with the Rotary Club. So we connected and it took us until Jan, let's see, from January to October of this past year, it took us that long to get it up and running and we signed up our first child to receive free books on October 10th. So, and the thing that we're proud about, other counties, surrounding counties have been in this program longer than us. And we have, what is it, 651 children signed up now to receive free books. They don't have to pay anything, they just need to sign up. It's all covered by us and it's a great program. Linda Harrell is on our board too, so she helps us with problems and anything that we come up with. We cover 11 ZIP codes and I was amazed, I thought, Louisa County, okay? Louisa County is also Keswick, summon Keswick, Troy, you know, I was, yeah, then you know. I was surprised of how many we were going to be covering and I thought, are we going to have the funding to do this? Because this is a lot of, this is a big area. This is, one of the books that they get when they sign up, The Little Train That Could, and they get a book for free every month. And our hopes is, we hope that the parents will sit down and read with their children and it really affects their scores when they go into school because they have a head start. I see this with my own grandchildren. Kaitlyn King in my office is in charge of the operating system and there's a lot to it. Every day, one of us goes into the system and we review the kids that have signed up to make sure they're in Louisa County. And then we approve them. And on occasion, someone will build a new home and it's not in the maps that Dolly has. So the parent will reach out to us, I've tried to sign my, my son or my daughter up and I can't do it because they're saying, I don't live in Louisa, and I do. So Kaitlyn's job is to help with any of the issues that come up and she reaches out to Dolly and we get it squared away. We had a heck of a time with Spring Creek because they kept saying, this is Gordonsville, this is Gordonsville, and it's not. So we have several setups for our Spring Creek folks. We have a lot of people on our team, Pat and Judy Hanley, Kaitlyn Ophelia Payne with the library, Lauren Cunningham, Linda Harrell is our advisor, and then we have four retired teachers helping us with fundraising and getting the word out, Cochran Garnett, Jill Williams, Peggy Karestis and Nancy Rotinsky. So they're really dedicated to getting the word out and signing kids up. I mean, they're at Walmart talking to folks and they're, you know, in community events and so forth. So this has been well-received in the community and what Pat said, the Central Virginian has been such a big help because every time they put an article out about us, we get all kinds of phone calls. They either want to sign their kids up or they want to join our team and help with the fundraising. So Pat, if you want to talk more about the numbers and who supports us, and I'll step aside.
Thank you. There are over 2,000 children under the age of five in Louisa County. Our goal is to serve 70% of them or 1,500 children. Our goal is to enroll that number of children by July. I thought it would be easier to enroll children, it's not. We've had great success, we have 651 enrolled. But in order to achieve our goal of 1,500 or 70% of our target population, much more work is to be done. And if you think about 70% in the context of what all of you have just gone through last year, only 40% of the people eligible to vote voted last November. And a lot of work is put into that, a lot of hard work is put into getting out the vote. We're trying to get 70% of our target population. We've been successful, but we need a lot of help. The Central Virginian has helped. Doug Straley sent out letters to all families of Louisa County Public School. We got a big jump in enrollments right after that letter went out. Lloyd Runnett is putting our information into backpacks, that has helped. Parks and Rec put out on Facebook a good brochure that we think will help and they're advertising it in all of their programs. The library is working with us, the Arts Center is advertising the program and actually signing up kids on the arts bus. The Chamber of Commerce has been a big help too. All that work needs to continue, but we need to find other ways of reaching the 1,000 kids that we can't find. There are 1,000 kids we haven't found yet. And they're in this community and we need to find them. And we need to figure out ways of finding them. I'm going to meet with the Human Services Organization, I guess her name, Janice Shepherd, I do not know her, but I am going to meet with her. We visited daycare centers. Parks and Recs put out this great brochure, but I was too late to get into it. This would have been a great ad for Dolly if we could have gotten into this. James is going to make sure we're into it, we're in it in the future. There are probably other media that we can reach out for and go for. We need help finding, getting our way into the churches and the other service organizations. I mentioned the daycare centers. We, we just need help, more arms and legs. I think this is something where we're just going to have to go knock on people's doors, visit churches, visit daycare centers, do what we have to, find other social media to make it happen. But we need, we need the help to do that. The program costs the local affiliate $20,000 a year. If we get to 1,500 kids, our price is 15, our price is $20,000. The state funds 50%, so they, they fund another $20,000. There's an effort in Richmond now to codify or to make sure that happens. The Dollywood Foundation is working with legislators in the state to make sure that that 50%, 50% support is codified. I've sent information to Duane and to Christian about that and I'll keep you posted as to how that progress works. But we need the continued support of the county. We are looking for sustainable, sustaining contributions to keep the program going. This program does not end. This program will be in Louisa County as long as there are children under five in the county and we can sign them up. There's no end date to this program and we appreciate your support and we appreciate the support of everyone that's working with us. And we're ready for your questions, any comments, suggestions you have, we greatly appreciate.
Mr. Williams? I just have a couple of questions for Hanley because I don't understand, I understand what you said. So you have 1,500 kids you're looking to target. The paper says they're getting 60 books?
Yeah, they get books from, if a child signs up at birth.
How often do the books come?
They come every month and mailed to the child at their home.
So does it stop when they reach five years old?
Yes.
Okay, so if I sign up a four-year-old, he's only getting 12 books?
We've actually had five-years-old, five-year-olds sign up and they've already graduated.
So that's 90,000 books a year is what I did for 1,500 kids. And it, and that's, and that's $20,000 a year for that program?
Our, our share of it, our 50% share that we have to raise is $20,000 a year as long as the state funding continues. If the state funding stops, we're $40,000 a year.
I'm sorry, so the total cost, I thought the state put in 10 and you're asking for us to put in 10?
The state puts in 20.
State puts in 20?
$40,000.
Yeah, the state puts in 20, we put in 20, we're asking you for 10, we're asking you for half of that.
Okay, very good. I was just trying to get the number straight in my head because I didn't.
Thank you, thank you for helping me clarify that.
So it really is a function of how many kids you have in the system at any given time.
Yes.
So let me ask you a question, just hypothetically, we give you $10,000 this year for your program. You audit that at the end of the year and then decide the request for next year comes back less if you don't spend it all? Is that what you're thinking? I mean, how are you going to do that, sir?
The way Wanda described it to me, if we don't use it, we don't ask you for it. In other words.
So it's like a monthly billing or something? Is that the way it is? So you're like collecting it in real time and sending it out to the books?
Yes, we will send you, we will send you the bills and the requests for payments.
The way that it bills, we have an account set up with Dolly.
Ma'am, use your microphone just for that.
The way that it works, we have an account set up with the Dollywood Foundation. And so all of our money is already there, they bill us for the number of books that they send out. And as soon as those, as soon as that bill hits our account with them, the state puts their money in, the half, the half, the 50%.
So this is about a little less than 50 cents a book?
Well, it was $2.20.
It's 90,000 books for 1,500 kids. Well, that's not right because it's 1,500 times 12, it's a book a month, isn't it?
A book a month and it's like $2.20?
Basically, our bill.
I was doing the whole 60.
Right, right.
Our bill was shipping out 633 packages of books in February. We received our bill already, that bill's about $1,500. The state will pick up half of that and we will pay the other half of it.
So it's $18,000 a month, it's 18,000 books a year, excuse me. So it's $40,000 divided by 18,000. It's about $2.22 a book, does that sound about right?
That's right, that's correct.
I was doing my math wrong because I was, I was thinking the whole 60 books, but it's not, it's only, it's only one year's worth of books. 60 is five years' worth of books if you got it from birth.
That's right.
And that includes shipping, shipping's 81 cents a book.
Mr. McCutter?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask.
Use your mic, sir.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask, would the Rotary be amenable to the matching grant again or is that something that was just last year?
Well, we, we did the matching grant to get the program started. I think our Rotary Foundation is prepared, if necessary, to invest more. But we are seeking, we are seeking contributions from others, including the county. We do have plans to file for positional grants, for example, the Cook Foundation gave us a $3,000 grant. We do plan to get as, as much funding as we can without going back to the Rotary. But if the Rotary is prepared to do something that they have to. But 5,000 is a big chunk for our foundation.
Thanks, Pat.
Mr. Barnes?
Certainly, I grew up in a household where my dad had a third grade education and my mom had a ninth grade education and reading was very important to us. I had two retired teachers that would take me to the library, Walter Cecil Rawl Library, and they checked out books and worked with me and my siblings. And that's how we fell in love with reading. I'm not opposed to what you're doing, my concern is timing, mid-year appropriations. And when you think about it, consistency, because we always have worthwhile organizations that come to us mid-year. And if, and if you give, it don't sound like a lie, but if you get six or seven of them and you're giving them $10,000 or whatever.
Mr. Barnes, I think they're asking for July 1, they're not asking.
Oh, okay, not right now.
I just want to be clear, they're kind of presenting, it's in your packet here.
So you are talking about next year?
For July 1.
Okay.
This is basically an outside agency request.
Right.
And they're coming a little early.
So we don't have to give them answers tonight? I'm good with that, man.
Just want to be clear, sir.
Yeah, because the night wouldn't have been good.
I got worried there for a while.
I'm good, Pat, the night just wouldn't have been good, I'm good.
This is fiscal year 25 request.
Mrs. Jones?
While you've been talking and I've been looking at some of your literature, is this the information here if somebody wanted to sign up or reach out that they, they call you? I just messaged the director of the Zion United Methodist Church Preschool and Daycare Center, who's, which is the largest daycare center on the western end of the county privately run. She hadn't heard of the program, which I'm shocked because she's just linked in. So I just snapped her all these and she said she's going to look into it. But it is, if you are doing outreach at Zion United Methodist Church, it's a Zion Children's Center.
Thank you.
And a lot of western edge kids under five are there.
I visited Miss Elizabeth's Jupiter. I visited, I asked a friend to bring material down to the Baptist, the Mineral Baptist Church. Tori Williams brought the material down there for me. But it's, we need arms and legs, we need contact, who do we talk to?
So she and I have been messaging.
It can happen, but a small group of people can't make it happen. We need to engage and get the word out and get a lot of people, because I believe the signups are there. And Miss Elizabeth.
Believe they are.
She was so excited about the program, she took, she had 70 kids, she copied 70 of, 70 of our packages and put them into backpacks.
Yeah, this program's about the same as Miss Elizabeth's daycare size.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for coming tonight and presenting this to us. So I'm gathering there's no limitations other than age. So it's zero to five years old, there's no income?
No, no, not at all, no. And they're not, they, they don't have to make a donation, they're not, we're not asking them for money.
We will not ask them for any payment or any donation.
Right.
Any family that enrolls, there's no discussion of a donation.
Right.
Well, there is one other requirement, that's residents in Louisa County.
Yes.
That's correct. But there are other counties, there's Flavanna County and.
Yeah, but let's be clear, if this board decides to appropriate money to this program, it will only be spent on residents in Louisa County.
Absolutely.
Louisa County residents, it's just, they're in 11 ZIP codes.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah. Any other questions? Let me kind of summarize this up just so we. Well, first of all, thank you all for coming, I'm like, I'm like Mr. Barnes. Reading is extraordinarily important to me and being a farm kid from West Virginia, I never saw the ocean until I was 18. But I had a good feeling for it because I read about it for years and years and years. But number one, this is a fiscal year 25 request. It is for residents of Louisa County. And I think, and this is the part I really want to get my head around. The $10,000 that you're asking as an outside agency appropriation would really be an appropriation not to exceed $10,000 because it's on a reimbursement basis. So it could be 8,000, 7,000, could hit the max 10 as an ongoing program next year when you would look again, if we had appropriated 10 and you'd use seven, that three that wasn't used has never left the county conference. I just want to kind of, kind of make sure I've got that cleared up, that that's how, that the money would be on a reimbursement basis, not a, not a forwarding basis.
That's correct.
Can I ask a question real quick? So basically you've got 20 coming from a state, 10 coming from some other pot and 10 coming from here is what your request is. So would you be asking that you, that the county paying more than 25% of the bill every month? Because let's say your 10, let's say your 10, your 10 falls, the other 10 falls through. Are we then picking up 50% or are we paying no more than 25% per month not to exceed the $10,000 per year? Is that, summarize your question.
And we could submit our request for payments with that caveat.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, I appreciate you being out tonight, I came to your kickoff at the library, um, October tenth, you had your first child, January sixteenth, you have six hundred and fifty-one, that's awesome. I will say this, I wrote this down, MACA and Head Start would be, and plus the churches and and that sort of thing. So I think everything we do here tonight, and whether it's a Central Virginian or Gage Louisa, Louisa that gets the information out, or this this livestream. The more awareness that we raise and your partnership with the schools, um, whether this board decides to fund you, doesn't fund you, whatever. The more that we talk about it and the more that we get the word out, I think you're gonna get collectively more people. But I think it's a great program and I look forward to to support it. Good, good, well, thank you, I'll be very careful going home this evening, yes, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
All right, next is, um, discussion of photo contests, you want to talk about that, you want me to talk about that?
We can both talk about it.
Yeah, I'll let you go first.
Idea, the chairman and I have talked several times over the years about ways to add a little bit of, uh, life to the walls in this room, which are, um, fairly bland. And he came up with a great idea of of asking you all whether or not you'd like to have the community enter a photo contest. Where if people provided photos of landscapes in Louisa, uh, that type of thing, uh, we could have a committee put together and then we could judge them and have them professionally framed, just like we do the, uh, the high school artwork as well. You all could set a, this is your meeting room, the public's meeting room, you could decide how many pictures you wanted and, um, select the the best from the group and and go from there. So that's the the broad strokes of the conversation.
Yeah, I think part of the idea, each district would be represented with, you know, X number of of pictures to to. And it would involve our citizens, get them involved in in highlighting the natural scenic beauty of Louisa County. So if there's no objection to that, I'll work with Mr. Goodwin, we'll put together a board, uh, work group, we don't have to do that tonight and move forward with that, I'll ask for your input.
These would be landscape pitches and not individual pitches or anything like that.
Yeah.
We could have one of you if you want.
Yeah, we could do, yeah.
It wouldn't be our pictures that were taken at the last meeting.
No, it would not, it might be the 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 fiber coiled on that pole across the street from your house. No, it would not be individual, it'd be landscape and 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 that sort of thing.
Pictures of dump trucks sitting in farm fields with tires off of them.
Oh, no, pretty landscape.
It'd be getting fun watching those guys work on that truck.
All right, let's move on, uh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Um, under our new business, I just, um, I wanted to kind of float the idea, maybe have staff investigate it a little bit, the issue, it's come up, I know I've talked to Mr. Goodwin, I think you and I have talked about it. About the possibility of looking at having, um, whether it's a division or paid staff, um, working to clean the community up with the trash. Assisting and taking some of the pressure off of the volunteers that are diligently working around the county to clear, uh, clean up the ever. The deposits of trash that people throw out of their vehicles, but actually having, I know other counties do actually have cleanup crews that will go around, um, so it kind of just, what's that?
Prisoners.
That's what I just wrote, Central Virginia.
Right, but it's not always an option, um, Fauquier County actually has a crew, um, that goes around and cleans up their county, but I'd like to see what it could take to have that. The trash is piling up again in my district, I'm sure it's in everyone else's district.
We have a very clean district.
You have a clean district, well, you are lucky there because Zion's, I don't know what it is about our district, but.
Trashy people.
Everyone likes to throw their trash in in the ditch lines and it's floating around.
We can, we can, we can discuss that internally, right, that's what you're asking?
I'm asking for a discussion on that.
Yeah.
And see what staff thinks about that.
Well, why don't, why don't we, why don't we appoint a work group of Mrs. Jones and Mr. McCutter to work with staff to see if there's something we can come out, are you willing to serve?
Mr. Chairman, I I am, I would definitely like to, I didn't know this was gonna be brought up tonight, but we have people in our our district who are very much concerned about this.
Yeah, it's a big issue.
What you said are two other additional options, other than relying on volunteers.
Okay, all right, all right, we'll move on to, um, excuse me, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? We don't have any committee reports, but I did mention earlier that, um, I will appoint a work group, a Parks and Recreation Work Group. And I will appoint to that, if you're willing to serve, Mrs. Jones and Mr. Woodward to work with staff on the items that we've heard discussed, Mrs. Jones, okay.
Yep, happy to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't met with the Parks Committee yet, you disappointed me, but I sent, I sent an email out to all board members, um, to just, um, for our planning purposes. See how much it would cost if we would do a bomb referendum for the, uh, pickleball facility and a indoor swimming pool.
Okay, all right, keep us updated, um, board appointments, um, we have some, Mr. Williams?
I will appoint, I'd like to appoint Ms. Robin Horn to the Lake Anna Advisory Committee.
Okay.
For, on behalf of you.
Yes, sir, any other board appointments, any motions, or second? All those in favor would do a voice vote, signify by saying aye, any opposed, motion passes, Mr. Goodwin?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, just very, very briefly, uh, the county administrator's report in your packet does include the monthly reports for December from all the departments, lots of good information, uh, in there. We do have a consulting party meeting this week for the J.R.W.A.'s section one oh six, um, permit, that process is moving along, so I'll keep you posted on how that goes. My packet does also include an update on the Virginia Communic, the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, funded fiber efforts, uh, not only in the county, but throughout the entire region. And please make sure that you've got the Father Daughter Dance, which is on February second and February third, uh, in your calendar.
Sold out.
Sold out, oh, now that, nothing, all right, well, any questions for Mr. Goodwin? All right, we'll move on to public hearings, we do have one public hearing, which is a resolution to approve or deny R E Z twenty twenty-three dash oh eight and C U P twenty twenty-three dash oh eight. Uh, Stafford, I think Mr. Gillespie's beat me to the podium, Stafford Contracting LLC applicant, Christian Ellis owner, proffered amendment conditional use, Mr. Gillespie.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Mr. Goodwin, uh, before you this evening is an application with two requests, so there are two parts to it, one's a requ, uh, rezoning request, so request one. R E Z twenty twenty-three oh eight, request rezoning to amend proffered conditions to add contractors' offices and shop as a use permitted by conditional use permit. Uh, it's not currently listed, uh, in fact, it's currently, um, prohibited. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of that, uh, request. Request number two in the application is C U P twenty twenty-three oh eight, a conditional use permit application for a contractor's offices and shop. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of that C U P with six conditions. You have all the material in your packet, just to kind of briefly run through some slides, um, it is one parcel, subject property, one point one two oh five acres, one point one two acres, zone light commercial C one. It's outlined on the map in the center screen here in red, um, the other color code, just to orient, agricultural A is the green, so across the street to the north, uh, on Kentucky Springs. All the pink is C one commercial and the kind of light lavender or light purple is R two, uh, general residential. Subject property is located on Kentucky Springs Road, Route six fifty-two, in the Kentucky, excuse me, in the Cuckoo Election District. The twenty forty Louisa County Comp Plan designates this area of Louisa County in the Lake Anna Growth Area, uh, which is in the Lake Anna Growth Area for low-density residential uses. The subject property is one mile northwest of the intersection of Kentucky Springs Road and Haley Drive, um, which is the primary access point to North Anna Power Station, a Dollar General Store, and the planned Lake Anna Technology Campus, being developed for A W S or by W S. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of the of the proposed request for rezoning and conditional use permits, uh, in your packet, uh, described in a little more detail. To help protect Louisa County's rural character by limiting the expansion of commercial uses into rural areas through development of an existing C one light commercial zoned property. Planning commission and staff recommend this in part due to the proposed contractor's offices and shop being consistent with one of the county's guiding principles in the twenty forty plan, which is to broaden the tax base by establishing businesses via relocation of a business to Louisa County. Uh, this is a little more, uh, information that was in your packet, but zoning history of the parcel is, um, uh, goes back to nineteen sixty-nine, was originally zoned agricultural A, uh, the master zoning in nineteen eighty-nine changed it from A to A two. There've been two cases that occurred in, um, uh, kind of near time to each other, the first was R E Z two thousand six oh one, in October of twenty six, two thousand six, the board approved rezoning. A total of thirty-three acres, which were then later subdivided into the parcels that exist and lots that exist now. From general agricultural A two to general residential R two and general commercial C two, pretty much with the same color layout that you saw, um, on the map or the zoning map earlier. However, about a year later, August of two thousand seven, the board then rezoned some of the general residential and general commercial to light commercial. And it included proffered conditions with a list of permitted uses, those things that were not listed are not permitted. The applicant has worked with staff over the past few months on a concept plan, um, that will go through site plan review, that plan is shown, the concept plan is shown on the current slide. I will note a couple of things, um, kind of in the twelve o'clock position near where the word Kentucky starts, uh, you'll see that there is a, uh, rectangle that goes over the property line. As a shared access point with the adjoining parcel, uh, this is known as lot, the subject property is known as lot four, the adjoining parcel is known as lot three. And together, lots three and four have a shared access point that will be built to a commercial driveway standard. Again, we can come back to any of these, if you want to look at that, um, the plan may change a little bit, but I will say the applicant has been working closely with the typical review agencies, the Health Department and Department of Transportation, to ensure that his plan makes sense and that it's feasible. Again, the same color scheme, the green, pink and purple, uh, showing ag, um, commercial and residential respectively. Also in the slide, um, which is not in your packet, so the slide on the screen is a little, a little new, it just points to the two access points, again, the one shared, um, that rides over the property boundary on lots three and four. Uh, there's also a shared access point at lots one and two, um, that one's set up a little differently, uh, the access drive in that case will be entirely built on lot one, so it won't straddle the property line. But through that access point, lot one will access lot two, and we've seen a plan for lot three that shares to lot two. So there'll be inter parcel connectivity along these lots, um, using shared access points and inter parcel connections, which is great. Uh, VDOT has commented on the, um, proposed request for, the two requests for rezoning and conditional use permit, uh, you'll see this on the screen, it's, this requires a commercial access. So essentially, a commercial access has to be built with a, uh, flare or return radius to come into it and a wider, uh, throat, uh, as well as a somewhat deeper throat paved to a certain standard. Uh, this goes back, um, about the same time period when we were looking at a proposed site plan for a restaurant use, which is a use permitted on lot three, so we know they've already worked together. And in your packet, I think, was the letter from the owner of lot three saying that he's working with lot four and is happy to share access and make sure they do it well.
The restaurant by right?
Correct, uh, restaurant is by right under the C one, um.
Contractor storage facility is not?
Contractor's offices and shop is a permitted, is not permitted under the proffers that have, that were imposed in two thousand seven.
Because of the proffers, they're not?
Correct.
Got it.
It is a use permitted only by conditional use permit in C one, though, and so that's why this case has two parts to it, the first is.
First, you gotta pull it out of proffer, and then you have to C U P for it.
Correct.
Got it.
Yep. This is the concept for the restaurant site plan, and again, it's.
Is that in our packet?
I'm sorry?
Is that in our packet?
That is, no, sir, that is not in your packet.
It's online, then.
Not online.
Uh, this is still in review, it's not approved yet, um, but essentially, the, um, if I'm gonna come up to the screen, it's probably a little easier to point out. So the property line essentially comes through here, quite as obvious, um, as what you can see on the other concept plan from the applicant. Somewhere there's a shared access drive and it'll be built with a commercial driveway.
But if, but if that's approved, then it becomes, they have, they're required to make, upgrade that to a commercial entrance, correct?
Correct, so the two owners will need to work together because the driveway will be located on both sides of the, of their shared property line.
But even if the other one done developed, it's still gonna be a commercial entrance.
Correct, it will need to be a commercial entrance.
Even if only one develops, still the commercial, still have to both do it.
Correct.
You know, same entrance.
Same, one shared commercial driveway entrance, yes, yep. Uh, again, just looking a little bit closer, and I've put on the screen, uh, a detail of that commercial entrance, uh, kind of a standard cut, uh, put on the site plan. Um, it does involve, uh, some clearing, so it would change a little bit on Kentucky Springs Drive, you know, the fifty-foot width with the, with the, uh, kind of the flared radius as well as cutting back for visibility if needed. So again, uh, the two recommendations, uh, which I've already stated, planning commission and staff recommend approval of the rezoning, uh, to amend the proffered conditions to add contractors, contractor's offices and shops as a use permitted by conditional use permit. And the second part of the request, uh, C U P, uh, for contractor's offices and shop, in this case, the planning commission and staff recommend approval with six conditions, the six conditions are in your packet, uh, pages ninety-nine to one hundred in the draft resolution. And they, um, are also on the screen, I'll read them if you would like, or I'll skip them if you would like.
If you have free to skip them.
Okay. Um, I will, I will note, item number four was added by the planning commission, so that was external storage of equipment, vehicles, supplies and materials is not, uh, to be permitted. So essentially, the office can have a vehicle, but he's not gonna store vehicles there, he's not gonna have, um, or he, the applicant, the applicant would not have equipment, vehicles, supplies, um, in what sometimes called, um, a construction yard. So this would not be a construction yard, it would be, uh, not be permitted.
So you couldn't park a company vehicle there overnight outside?
He could, if it's accessory to the main building, he could, um, he couldn't have five vehicles parked there for storage, right? In other words, in other words, if it's not being used in the regular business of the operation, then it would be storage.
So if I, I own a construction company and we park vehicles sometimes, especially there on the weekends, just because the boys park them and drive their personal vehicle home, is that allowed?
Uh, in this case, it would not be storage because it's, it's, it's essentially gonna be, be put back in rotation in the next business day, so, no, that's not storage.
Seems like maybe the wording.
I know, it's, it's a little.
Seems the wording could be a little better, but maybe I'm wrong.
How many, how many, well, two questions, one, I thought I understood something till you just answered, so now I don't understand it. How many trips per day are we looking on average?
I don't have a number for that, but I I will say that the applicant, um.
All right, so we'll come to that, are you the applicant? All right, so we'll come to that in a minute.
Mr. Ellis is here.
Um, so let's go back to the storage, so I've got.
It's the storage of the vehicles that.
Yeah, so I've got five vehicles that, four, three, it doesn't matter what the number is, if I park them on Friday, because my employees drove their personal vehicles to work, that means their personal vehicles have been sitting there all day. And then, because this also abuts residential neighborhood, right, residential property?
Uh, it it does abut residential property, there's, there's a very large tract at the back of this that has been built, it was, I think, originally conceived to be a subdivided parcel along with the adjoining parcel. Lots five and six, um, lots five and six have since been, in the last year, uh, in fact, I'm not sure if they're both occupied yet, but they're, in the last year, they've both been built on for new houses. So it, it's possible that those properties could be further developed and re-subdivided, but at this point, uh, lots five and six have one home, um, I mean, just I know. The house on lot five was built essentially right there, and the house on lot six was built about right there, so they're, yeah, they. They, they are both fairly close to what will eventually be a commercial uses.
Mr. Gillespie, go back to your number four, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm just sensitive to the fact that number four won't get perverted at some time in the future. Let's say that I, I, let's say that he has a practice or whoever owns this contractor yard in the future has a practice that you come, you pick up your truck at the place in the morning and you leave and you come back. And, and that, is that storing your vehicle there, even if it's overnight? I mean, I I'm just asking, it just, I mean, here, here's a better one, let's say I have a, a mini excavator, and I just park it outside, it's not allowed?
So a mini excavator would be equipment, not really a vehicle.
It would be.
Right, so you'd be.
So you couldn't park any of that stuff there?
Not ex, not outside.
Not outside, and you couldn't, you couldn't have fifteen cinder blocks sitting outside?
Not, and not under this condition.
I just, I just want to be clear, I mean, I, I own one of these with a C U P. And it's, uh.
I will, if I may, um, this was a case that was presented to the planning commission, had they had some discussion about external storage, um, Mr. Ellis can speak to, you know, the nature of the business, he agreed to it. I will say, vehicles are, in, in the cases that you've suggested, vehicles are the most likely to be a little questionable about whether it's stored or just part of the rotating business.
And right now, your current interpretation would be, we're not storing a vehicle because they're just parking there overnight and using them, that's, that's your interpretation.
Correct.
Of course, you and I may not always be here.
Right.
And you may have a neighbor that complains, hey. And you may have a neighbor that complains, hey, he's got a C U P, he's not supposed to store his vehicles. And his, and he's got five, five trucks parked outside every night when they go home.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if, if I would liken it to like a boat and RV storage...
So should we write, should we be clarifying that a little better? That's my question, really. To, to help with the intent down the road, and I'm not, I'm not looking to lengthen this thing. I just, I'm just kind of sensitive to it. And maybe Mr. Ellis wants to speak to it.
I mean, you could, just talking here...
Yeah, I'll bring him up in a minute.
I gotta get your phone call.
I'll bring him up in a minute.
Okay, I was just saying, I'm just talking here, it's, you know, it's your, it's your policy and what's before you and what was recommended by the planning commission as a concept. You could certainly say, should not be stored more than one, two, three, four, five, seven days at a time, something like that. And that would be, I think, pretty reasonable and taking care of your, kind of your rotating business, your ongoing concern. That'd be one way to, to do it. You could strike vehicles, just to make that clear, that a vehicle is part of the business and it's not being stored. If it has a, you know, if it kind of transits a piece of property and sits there temporarily. Like, you know, boat and RV storage, people go, you know, it's stored for a fairly long period of time, not twenty-four hours.
You have any, are you...
Yes, sir. So that concludes staff's report. Again, if you want to pull anything up, I'd be happy to do that.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gillespie?
Can you go back for me, sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you go back to where you were showing where the residential homes sit adjacent to this property? How much, how much of a buffer will there be between the commercial?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. That is actually illustrated in the concept site plan.
Okay.
So, um, oops, that's the, not the applicant's concept site plan, but it's the same, uh, same thing. They, they do have vegetated buffers in the rear that they're not going to develop.
Okay.
And both of them have worked around. I, I was a part of some of these conversations about where the drain field was going to go and making sure that, um, there was an area essentially between the drain field and the property line that will be allowed to re-vegetate, to grow back up. This is a site of a, a former kind of campground slash mobile home park, and so it has some...
I'm familiar with it now.
Yeah, it ha, it has some, um, compacted soils and some other things that, that make certain parts of the property difficult to access. So part of what they all had to do in all these parcels was carefully pothole and make sure they weren't hitting remnants from the infrastructure from the...
Oh.
Mobile home park. So Mr. Ellis has done that, and his consultants have done that carefully on this site, as have the folks down the way. So he knows he doesn't want to go towards the back. And in fact, if I remember correctly, Mr. Ellis, the three trees in particular here are trees that you want to save.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can speak.
Our company logo is a tree.
Yeah.
So we're sensitive to not bother the tree.
Yeah. Mr. Ellis is saying his...
Is that your truck out in the parking lot with the tree on it? Okay, I thought I saw one out there with it.
So Mr. Ellis is saying his company logo is a tree, and, you know, he really, really reinforced that with us, that along the roadside on Kentucky Springs and also on the back of the property, they're going to preserve the trees where they can, and they don't need to use them. I mean, distance-wise, it's fifty or sixty feet of buffer.
But don't we have in our, in our ordinance that there's a required buffer between residential?
No, we have none.
And commercial?
Yes, that's, that is correct, between residential, commercial, and I believe it's, I have to check the, the code.
I thought we didn't.
Uh, not...
There is a buffer.
It is. The industrial and residential has a question mark on it.
Oh, so it's industrial and residential?
Correct.
Okay. I knew one of them we didn't.
Right. So we worked, we worked with Mr. Ellis, and, and, you know, that was his intent, was to not go places he didn't have to go. Again, the houses that have been built by the owner's election have been relatively close to that property line, but, um, that's where they've been placed. So these will grow back up over time. So in addition to the three trees that have been particularly called out for preservation, there are areas that will, you know, re-vegetate.
Any question? All right, the applicants here. Mr. Ellis, do you wish to address the board? It's totally up to you.
I just wanted to add the fact that...
Sir, I, I know, but for the record, can you state your name?
Oh, Christian Ellis.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Christian Ellis. My wife and I just recently bought a house in the waters. And I have an RV boat and, you know, personal vehicles. I wanted to place a store. I don't want them sitting out in front of my house in the neighborhood. You know, I want it property value to stay up, stay looking good in the neighborhood. So that was the main purpose for the shop. There's really not going to be any work going on over there. I'm just storing my personal vehicles there. I use a lot of subcontractors. They have their own equipment and trucks. I meet them at the job. Nobody's really coming and going over at my office. It's just a storage facility. And I am aware of the fact there won't be anything outside, and I don't have any issues with that. I mean, the building's seventy-five by forty. I mean, there's plenty of room inside to keep things in there. Shouldn't be any reason to be outside. Don't want to, um, bother any residents. I want to fit in the fabric to community kind of unnoticed and just fit in where I'm needed. We build homes. We improve homes. We're two different companies. Like I said, nobody meets me at this business. I want me to meet them at their house and discuss with them what I can do at their place. There are very little traffic coming in and out of here, and I live less than a mile from the property.
Any questions for Mr. Ellis? All right, thanks, sir. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the board for this rezoning? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Mr. McCotter?
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken to my planning commissioner, county staff, as well as V dot, and they have all addressed any concerns I would have with this project. I would say in the future, that, that Mr. Gillespie has talked about on Kentucky Springs Road, we'll see change, much change. So we will have to be vigilant about what goes in there, and we may have to ask V dot to adjust the fifty-five mile per hour speed limit there. That being said, I, I recommend motion to approve.
Second.
Imprapty move and second, that we approve. Any discussion? Please cast your vote.
Guess who's up next for the motion?
Who knows? He knows.
My main man.
So move.
Second.
Well, we got to announce this vote. Hold on a minute.
Well, you got to get with us, sir.
I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm ready. Miss Purcell's already got her jacket. She's leaving. Motion passes. Seven, seven oh. Mr. Burns?
I never did pop up. Did yours pop up?
Yeah.
So move.
Second.
Imprapty move and second, we adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.